Like to call to order the December 10th regular meeting of the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners, if you would all please rise and recite.
We don't have a flag.
Hidden.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the secretary note, please note that all commissioners are in attendance, for the exception of Commissioner Pencek, but she is expected shortly. Are there any, next item is the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to pull out the reading of Policy 1520, the second reading, out of the consent agenda tonight.
Okay, is there any objection to that?
No, no.
Okay, then we will do that, and we will have that as a separate reading, and the consent agenda will stand minus that policy. Are there any other changes to the agenda? All right then, if I could entertain a motion to approve, wait a sec, yeah, a motion to approve the November 26, 2019 minutes of the Board of School Commissioners?
We're just doing it as a consent.
Oh, you're just, oh, so you're just pulling, okay.
I'm only pulling the policy.
There, you're just pulling the policy, okay, never mind. So then if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes, the Personnel Memorandum Number 605, and the Stafford Technical Center budget ratification.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I guess, unless somebody wants to go first, the only thing I want to say is that the tech center budget is very complicated, and so we did give it consideration, and we have moving it forward, so it's a very, I don't know where everybody is, but it's a very complex process, so I want it, I favor it, and I, we did give it consideration, so I just wanted to make that point, that we weren't just passing budget items without thinking about them.
It's managed well.
Okay, is there any other comments? I do want to point one thing out, on the minutes of the previous meeting, is that we had an action item that was under new business, and that was the appointment of a representative to represent the Board of School Commissioners with the Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust, or the Health Insurance Commission, and we should have suspended the rules on that, to vote on that, but given that it was unanimous, we're okay with that, but in the future, we'll have to remind that. And our resident parliamentarian reminded me of that shortly after, and Cam is correct, so I want to make sure that...
But I'm also guilty, because I seconded the motions.
Well, okay. So we all had our dirty hands in it, all right. All right, so then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And all abstain, just because of personnel issues.
Right, understood. All right, so if I could entertain a motion to approve as the second reading, second and final reading, Policy Number 1520, and then I would ask the clerk to read the revised policy. Do I have that motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All right.
Revised policy states, "Regular meetings of the Board of School Commissioners shall take place on the second Tuesday of the month at 6:30 PM. The fourth Tuesday of the month shall be reserved for board committee meetings or special board meetings. These minutes shall be held at its designated site within the district. It is the responsibility of the superintendent to propose the agenda and review it with the board president for each meeting of the board. It is the responsibility of the board president to review the proposal for any additions or deletions and approve the agenda. The agenda shall be distributed to the board members no later than the Thursday before such regular meetings. Items of business may be suggested by any board member, staff member, student or citizen of the district. The inclusion of these items on proposed agendas will be at the discretion of the board president and superintendent. The clerk of the board of the school commissioners, or his designee, shall notify the members of the Board of School Commissioners in advance of each meeting. Such notice and writing shall include an agenda with the time of the meeting."
All right, is there any discussion of that?
Go ahead, Allison.
Allison.
The last paragraph, instead of "his designee," should be "their designee."
Yeah, we did go to gender.
Okay, we'll note that. And then Cam?
No, and I just wanted to say I support this, and it was pulled out of the agenda from my, at my request, just because I want to make it crystal clear that we're not trying to get rid of meetings for the public. This will reduce the number of public meetings to 12 instead of 24, but we are going to have more committee meetings, and so I just wanted it very plain to the public that if that's an issue for them, they can come forward. So I just didn't want people to think we were just shoving things along without considering public input. So thank you for making it explicit and reading the policy in full, so that the public is fully informed. Thanks.
Okay, and you would also ask for a roll call vote on that?
Yes, just for the sake of saying how important we think it is to...
Okay, appreciate that.
...consider policy changes.
Any other discussion? All those then in favor, I'll start with Cam.
I get to say aye, it'll be unanimous for once.
Sherlyn?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Joanne?
Aye.
Dina?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
And Pat? All right.
Thank you.
So the administrators who do not have to come to two meetings a month can hold their applause until the end of the meeting. All right, so we are at a new location, if it looks a little bit different, we didn't do a renovation at Longfellow. We are in the new 77 Grove Street campus, it's great to be here, I had a tour prior to this meeting, and we're going to ask our associate Rutland High School principal, Mr. Greg Schillinger, to come up. We're going to have a few students talk about this wonderful new space and what it means. So Greg.
So first of all, thank you all for being here, we do appreciate your attendance, and also your attendance at the open house that we've had. While tonight is certainly recognition of the new location, it's important to note that the program itself is 30 years in the making, this is just really the most recent iteration of a program that has had years of success. So my role is going to be brief, and then I'm going to turn it over to the folks that you really want to hear from, but my job, I just wanted to take a moment before we do that to say thank you to all the folks who have made this latest iteration here at this location possible. First and foremost, I want to in particular thank the students who attend here. They're the reason for the program itself, and they're really the inspiration for the adults who work here, so I want to thank all of those students who are here as a part of this program, they really make it what it is today. And also I want to point out that 30 years of students having attended here, many of those community members are now adults and members, and productive members of our community, so thank you to them as well. Also I want to thank the superintendents who have been supportive over the years of this program. Programs like this don't exist because they don't have the support of leadership. So Adam Taylor, last year, Mary Moran was here for 18 years, and really fought and supported for this program, and there was some guy here before her, I forget who that was.
Keeps coming out.
More specifically, over the summer, the move from the Howe Center campus to the campus here was really a pretty involved process, and the folks who really made that possible are too many to name, so I'll name them kind of in groups. I want to particularly highlight the work of the IT department in the district. You had, one of the things that I never really understood was when you open up a new location, especially when it comes to technology and infrastructure, you are really starting from scratch. This building is as connected to the school district computer network as Library Avenue and the high school, so, you know, I bring my laptop from any one of those buildings and I walk in here, and cable had to be run, they were up on the roof connecting the network, it was really outstanding work, and I want to thank them for that. Along the same lines, the maintenance department, there was a lot of work done over the course of the whole summer, particularly I want to highlight those last few days in August. They brought new meaning to the definition, to the phrase, the cliche, "all hands on deck." Everybody was here, and when I say everybody, I mean everybody. There were truckloads being brought to this location, unpacked furniture being put together, so this, the chair that you're sitting on and the table that you're sitting at, it came in a lot of different pieces, so it was the maintenance department who put that together, so I want to thank them for that. Mark Foley was a really great community partner to work with, he's, we, this is his property, we leased from him, and he was really accommodating and a great partner to work with in the community. Last and very much not least, the adults who really make this place possible, and the current teaching staff, including Sherry, Lori, TJ, and Carolyn, really do extraordinary work every single day on behalf of these students. And as a part of that, the other teachers who I want to highlight, and if you take a look at these pieces of paper over here hung on the wall, they're actually lists of the graduates of each of the classes over the years, and all the way back at the beginning, starting with Jamie Holt and Greg McClellan, who really were the beginning and the seed that made this place possible. And both of them have really done extraordinary work, and she's going to hate it, and she's probably not going to watch this program because I'm going to say this, but Jamie Holt has been here regularly, working with students, substituting when she needs to, but just volunteering. This place really is a passion for her, and it's been a life's work for her, so I want to thank her. Finally, before I turn it over, I want to thank you, the board, you and all of your predecessors over the course of the last 30 years. As I said, programs like this don't exist without the support of leadership, and your support of programs like this has made it possible, so thank you very much, and I want to turn it over now to the important folks.
He's very shy, you're going to have to encourage him just a little.
Welcome to Grove Street Campus, my name is Carolyn Ravenna, and I'm actually going to turn it over very briefly to TJ Moran.
So as a history teacher, I figured we should give a little brief history on the place that goes right back to 1989. I think I was in middle school at the time, and we had a superintendent by the name of Charlie Skipounis, was a superintendent here, and he looked around at our community and at our school system and decided that we needed something different for some kids that would give them the ability to graduate high school, because they weren't fitting the mold that the high school was. And he came up with what was called AEP at the time, stood for Alternative Ed Program. And they originally started, Jamie and Greg sat down, and they had, I think it was a semester, six months to build a program, and then they started getting kids, and it started with five and six and seven, and it grew and grew, and they put them originally in a storefront downtown. They paid Paradise, put it in a parking lot, it's the parking lot next to what used to be the Marble Bank, it's now the Citizens Bank, there was a building there, they had a storefront, and in the storefront, part of the thing was they had to keep the storefront up, so the students would have to, for their community service, decorate the storefront for different seasons and different things that were going on. And as the program grew, they outgrew the space, and frankly, having, you know, 25 high school kids running around downtown and doing things there was a little hectic to keep them all under wraps in one spot, so Joe Giancola and Greg McClellan were good friends, and in fact, there was some ski coaching going on and whatnot between them, so they'd been friends a really long time, and Greg kind of twisted Joe's arm and got a good deal on the Howe Center campus, and Joe was always incredibly supportive of our program, both in the deal he had for the space, and in his support financially through the entire time the program was around. And so they put together the old building at Howe Center, and it stood the test of time for close to 20 years in that building, and it worked really well, and it was a great space, and it was phenomenal that the kids that came through the Rutland City school system had that opportunity. And as you can see on the wall, there's a huge stretch of them that used that piece of property and that were part of that. And as the world turns, we ended up needing a space that was a little different, a little more accessible, and a couple different places came up, and this happened to be the option that fit what we needed best. And we've had a ton of support from the community, from other teachers, from the school board, from our students, from our students' parents, and, you know, we really appreciate what we have here, and we want to thank everybody very much for putting us here.
So I really don't have to say a lot now. TJ does a great job, and I really want to get to Betty. I just want to also thank the school board and thank the administrators and all our teachers. I have to turn around, because Pam's right behind me, and I don't want to forget Pam. All the support that we all have received over the years has been very well, we appreciate it a lot. So I just want to tell you a little bit about the program, the program is run on two beliefs, all students can learn if provided with the right educational environment, and every student should have the opportunity to learn and to achieve a quality of life they deserve based on their educational efforts and achievements. And you're going to hear from Betty, we, this program continues to be successful, our students are held accountable, I don't know if you know, they come in, they clock in, I think you saw the time clocks, and they have a contract, and so we work off a contract, and their education, when they finish their contract every week, then they can, they can leave and go home on Fridays. However, some students are here until 6, 7 o'clock at night on Friday night, because we expect that they complete that contract. So I want you to hear from Betty, because she has a great story about our program.
Good evening and welcome to Grove Shee Campus. My name is Betty Bell, and I am a Rutland High School senior attending at Grove Shee Campus. I started the House, I started at the Howe Center in like 10th grade, I struggled at the main campus during 9th grade, the bill, the big building was just too much for me, there was too many people, the cafeteria was too loud, I mean, some students weren't so nice, and I didn't feel like I was ever going to graduate, or attend college, or get a job. One day I was talking to one of the counselors, Ms. Ivy, and she mentioned Howe Center campus. At that point in time, I was willing to try anything. My first year at Howe Center was the best year ever, I finally understood what I was learning, and I got the help I needed because of the small classes and the personal connections to the teachers. I finally started to feel proud of myself. I was able to enroll in college classes at CCV to help me decide if college was right for me. I can't stress enough the personal connection to the teachers here. In the smaller classes is what makes this place a great place to learn. Each quarter, we set personal goals for ourselves, and that helps us in so many ways. We have some classes such as career education, school to work, and community service, that helps us prepare for life after high school. I started working at Gills with the help of TJ, this job made such a big difference in my life. I worked there for two years, and when I was ready to change jobs, I knew how to resign from a job and how to find a new one. I've been working at Olivia's now for four months, and as you can see, the connections to our teachers are very important, and we appreciate them a lot. During 11th grade, school was still going well for me, and Carolyn asked me to participate in Unified Sports. I became a partner to special Olympic athletes from our school, begin connected, and having support is so important. Carolyn and I would make special treats for the team when we traveled to tournaments, like we would stay after school or bake, make sure we baked something that all the kids could eat, and there's one kid, Ryan, which is my fellow teammate, we bowl together, and I'll either bring him in cheese sticks, something that he can eat, so everyone gets a treat, so he's not left out, because there's certain things he can't eat. So that's great, and he's, he's so great, I love him. But as far as my future is going, I graduate early in January, and because of Grove Street, I have options of whether I want to go to college right away or work for a while. Those were things I never thought I would be able to do, because of Grove Street, I have so many options, and I've learned so much. Thank you for your support of Grove Street Campus.
Thank you, Betty. Yes, Dave?
So I just want to say that Jamie and Greg started the program, I always thought of it as the best dropout prevention program in Vermont, because when I became commissioner, I visited 150-something schools, I never saw anything like this, and it's even better now. And looking at the three of you, we were in school together in different ways, weren't we? Supervised Lori's student teaching almost 30 years ago, had TJ in class when I was principal, Carolyn and I were colleagues, and I'm so proud of you, that's what I want to say, that you're still saving lives, and Rutland had, back then, and I think it's true now, I'd have to check, the lowest dropout rate in this area, and it was the second lowest in Vermont back then, and I believe because there were so many programs that helped keep kids in school. So great pride in all of you, really warms my heart seeing you here.
All right, thank you. We will continue the student portion of the evening, so Haley and Hannah are going to provide us with their student representatives' report.
Sure. So, starting with Northwest, Northwest students enjoyed a Thanksgiving feast on Friday, November 22nd, much thanks to Ms. Kim and Ms. Lynn in the Northwest Kitchen. First and second graders proudly performed beautiful choral concerts at both Northeast and Northwest schools recently, compliments of music teacher Jennifer Hart. Northwest looks forward to a Hero Assembly on December 17th to recognize students who display characteristics of gratitude and citizenship. The assembly will culminate with a whole school sing-along. At Stafford Technical Center, Governor Shulman came to Stafford Technical Center for Legislative Breakfast. All reps from Rutland County were invited. He toured the center and got to start the race car that was built by students.
For Rutland High School, tomorrow night there is a chorus and orchestra concert at 7:00 PM in the RHS Theater. The Rutland Youth Theater is performing Frozen Junior this Friday at 7:00 PM, and this Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00 PM. Come support the 10 RHS students that are in the play. Also, congratulations to Trevor McKay for being chosen as one of the two Vermont students to attend the United States Senate Youth Program this March. Trevor will receive a scholarship for $10,000, and will get to spend a week in Washington experiencing national government action.
Great, all right, thank you very much. So we will move on now to the superintendent's report, Mr. Walk.
Very brief, and after this, we'll just take a minute or two, those of us who are sitting here will go out into the audience in the front row so everyone can see what's going to happen behind us. So just a quick preview on the budget you're going to see, this is a little different because you're going to be able to see an overview of the budget, and how different interactions that you decide upon now in January will have an impact on the tax rate. You'll almost have a menu, an interactive menu that you can work with, and then see what that decision, A, B, C, or D, what impact that will have on the tax rate, but also on education. So it's going to be different, something you haven't experienced before, somewhat innovative, I think, and interactive. So just two things, first, we've had some education policy leaders visit us. Secretary of Education Dan French, I mentioned last time, was very impressed with what he saw at the high school in Stafford, and the focus was on proficiency-based learning, but met with a lot of students and found that to be very inspiring. Same with Governor Scott, who is here with the Stafford Tech Center, the legislative group, the students, and you mentioned the race car, which got depressed, but he was able to interact with employers who were indicating how wonderful the connection is with Stafford, so, you know, we've talked about Stafford a lot because they've had the accreditation, they've had a lot of attention, but it's all well deserved. So the final, if you were to think of the people who make policy in Vermont, currently it would be the secretary, the governor, and the legislature, all of whom have had interactions in Rutland City Public Schools in the last two months. In January, the State Board of Education's going to meet here, they're going to meet at Rutland High, we're going to ask Culinary Arts Program students to make a dinner that evening, their focus will be on their normal business, but they wanted to get out of the sort of my Puyallure Burlington corridor and get out into Vermont, and so they're coming here, and we'll have a good day on January 16th, I believe that will be. The final thing is that all of the people who work in the Rutland schools are special to us, to their students. I wanted to mention one person whose journey in the last two weeks has touched the hearts of many of us who know him and love him, and that is a very beloved Rutland High history teacher, Chair of the Department, John Peterson, who this year is in his 35th and final year teaching at Rutland High, and right after our last meeting, right around Thanksgiving, he suffered a heart attack, waited a couple days, went to Burlington, had a procedure done, was sent home, and then suffered a second heart attack. And I want to tell you the good news, because it was risky surgery that he had yesterday, and a doctor who is a specialist and very widely known and respected at UVM Med Center did the surgery and said it was one of the most complicated he had done in 40 years, and John has survived the surgery and is doing pretty well, has a very long road ahead of him, but there were a whole lot of people sending good karma and big love their way. I was able to spend Friday with him, with John and his wife, and a lot of us, Bill, would you say, everyone at the high school's been on the edge of their seats?
For sure, until today, good news today, so.
Yeah, yeah, really good news. So I wanted you to know, and students, you know Mr. Peterson, so we're all pretty grateful. I just want everybody else to know, that's all I have.
All right then, I think we need to find another place to sit. No, I think, Cam, you're going to be okay where you are, I think it's just those of us.
I was preparing for the onslaught.
Oh, I got it, all right.
Unkering down.
Pass these out, well.
Bringing any paper with you or no?
No.
Okay.
It's not giving you a used copy right here. I was kidding. Hopefully my deodorant holds up.
Thank you.
Mary, this is all wet, right there, watch it.
Very excited to see this.
Well, we can stay here?
Cam, we'll meet offline. In the bunker, in the bunker.
Hey Dave, I want to say something too, I'm glad you guys got all those parking lots fixed and all, because I play bocce ball over here and we're lacking of parking, so.
At the Italian club?
Yes, just, so, you know, I'm thankful for this. That was pretty good.
Barricade the parking lot. This is coming up. I'll start by apologizing for not getting some of this information to everybody a little bit earlier, but working on it pretty consistently right up until about noon fine today with this version, and, you know, even about 3 o'clock this afternoon, it's 3:30, got an update on a piece of this, so it's definitely a moving target. So I'll start out, the last time we met, we focused on the net education spending that we would get from the state, and we didn't talk too much about the gross expenses, and that's what you see up here, you see FY '20, fiscal year '21, and it's broken down into its various components. A little bit higher than what you saw a couple weeks ago, because we've got a couple of extra positions that, you know, Dave and I had talked about and agreed to put in there for next year, their kindergarten paraeducators, and we feel that with all the alternative programs that are being discussed, kindergarten was not part of that, and that the paraeducators at the kindergarten level are probably really important to get those kids ready for the rest of their educational experience, and are less likely to need the intense alternative programs if they have a good start with paraeducators. So a couple of things about these numbers, they do not factor in the expanded alternative programs that we've been talking about lately, they, we just don't have enough detail around how existing resources will be reallocated, what kind of potential grants could help fund it, where they're going to, where they're going to be located, so it's still a little premature to be adding or adjusting these numbers for that. And the other thing that these numbers do not include is the impact... And the other thing that these numbers do not include is the impact of the healthcare arbitration, which I expected we would get a decision on that on the 15th. We got a decision on that actually at 3:30 this afternoon. So, I don't know what the impact of that decision is going to be. Overall, it looks like there may be some increased healthcare costs across the state. I'm not sure what the specific increases are going to be for us. If you look at these numbers, salary and benefits make up about 78% of this total, $59.7 million of expenses. And in addition to that, we've got special ed, utilities, and some of the financing. Those are all basically non-discretionary expenses. Sure, we can, you know, change the salaries by, you know, laying off people, but we don't really want to do that. And, you know, other than that, the increase in expenses is pretty much determined by union contracts. So, that doesn't leave us a whole lot of room within those numbers to be making some changes, but we'll talk about that going forward. If you look at those expenses, there are a couple of things, and we talked about this last time as well, that are really driving those costs up. As you see, the healthcare premiums, you see a growth of 13.3% there. That's actually higher than the premiums themselves are going up, which is about, you know, anywhere between 2.5, or 12.5 to 12.9%. And the reason for that is we've got a few more people in the program in FY '21 than we have in FY '20. So that also adds additional costs that is not completely driven by the premiums. And then the other piece is special ed. As we talked about before, there are a lot more IEPs that are anticipated for fiscal '21 and that requires a significant investment in additional resources. The difference between those two lines is one is a gross number and one is net after adjusting for the reimbursements that we get from the state for special ed. And that does include the Allen Street, so. So moving on to talk about taxes. This is where the taxes were in this current fiscal year, fiscal year '20. I think Peter Amens probably walked you through this sort of convoluted calculation to get down from the actual expenses to the tax rate. But I'll do a quick refresher for, you know, folks who may not have gone through this before. You see the gross expenses, we have some revenues that, you know, come from local, local things like tuition and reimbursements of special ed, that sort of thing, to get to the tap on the education funding, which is $32 million this year. There's equalized pupils. That number is specific to Rutland. But basically, what it is, is it's a count of our students and then it's weighted by certain factors by the state. The most impactful one for Arc City is the poverty weighting. And that's based on the percent of students who qualify for free and reduced lunches. And so we get a bit of a benefit on that. So, the next parameter is something called the property yield. That's a little bit of a black box, that number we receive from the state. And then the last piece, which is again, something that we have no control over, but it is specific to Rutland, is what's called the common level of appraisal, which basically is a measure of how real estate in Rutland is doing vis-à-vis the assessed values of the property. So the real estate sales in Rutland versus assessments. So as that goes, you know, as that's adjusted, that also has an impact on the tax rate. So this is where we are right now. As I said, those three factors, we have no control over, but they have a big impact on our tax rate, as we'll see in the next slides. So if we were to take the FY '21 numbers and just drop them down using the same three parameters that we have this year, as you see, it results in about a 7% increase in the tax rate. And again, a little bit higher than we were showing a couple of weeks ago due to some additional expenses that have crept into that top line there. So, you know, that's kind of the starting point that we go from. The state tax rate is projected to be about 6% growth this year. That was sent out in a letter from the Tax Commissioner about, I don't know, about a week ago. There was an article in Digger that, you may have read about it. But that's the situation with both the healthcare premiums and special ed is not unique to Rutland. And so, you know, it's being felt around the state and so the average tax rates are going up everywhere. And now for a little bit of good news. We did receive just this week, or actually at the end of last week, some new numbers from the state for FY '21. On the equalized pupils, no surprise there, they've dropped a little bit. Enrollments are going down pretty much everywhere. According to the state average, state average is going down by .49%. We don't have a specific number for Rutland yet, but I took a haircut on our current equalized pupils equal to the state average to get to that 2074 number. Because that drops our dollars per pupil or equalized, you know, cost per student, ends up being a bit higher than it would otherwise be. But then we get down to the property yield. And with the property yield going up, that actually is a benefit to us. And as you see on the bottom line, that 7% has actually dropped to 5.7%. And we haven't done anything with the actual expenses yet. So, that's where, you know, that's where we're starting from.
Can I jump in here? Why don't you put the interactive slide up?
Yeah.
So, I was at a meeting with superintendents, the local superintendents, yesterday. And everyone's feeling the pinch of special ed and healthcare. We went around the table and everyone said those were the main drivers of the budget. And then when you look at the state tax rate going up 6% and the health insurance and special ed, especially for us in Rutland, it's significant. So, the reason that we're offering this as a way for the school board to take a look at some of these expense reductions, and you may have more, is that Mary Almo is going to show you what impact it would have on the tax rate if you were to enact any of those four expense reductions in the menu. We know today isn't the last day, but we want to get advice from you on what you would like us to do when we come back in January.
Yeah. And just one caution. These are just some of the ideas that, you know, I've come up with in talking with various people and analyzing the budgets. Those three, you know, metrics from the state are also still just estimates, so they're subject to change as well. And as you can see, any change to those numbers does have an impact on the tax rate that we don't control.
Can I ask you to go to the next slide to show the equalized cost? Because I think that gives us perspective, then we can go back to that.
Yeah. This is where you can see what's happening with our equalized cost per pupil for the last couple of years and I'm sure well before that. As you can see, the Rutland City cost per pupil has been significantly below the total state cost per pupil. And for FY '20, I got this information yesterday that we are number 88 out of 118 districts in the state. So, in terms of our cost per pupil. And if we sort of narrow that field down to just our peer group, which would be districts that have more than 1,000 students in them, there are about 30 of those, and of those 30, we're number 21 in terms of cost.
So in the bottom quartile statewide in per pupil spending overall. And if you just compare us to the larger district, which some people think is a fair way to do it, we're in the bottom third.
Yeah. So, right. And this 17133 is the current state estimate for cost per pupil this year. And again, without playing with the numbers at all so far, we're at 16590, which is still well below that state average. So if we go up, what we wanted to show you today is, you know, how, it's hard to, it's hard to see what the impact of a change in our expenses has on the tax rate because as I've gone through, it's not a direct relationship at all. It's very complicated. So with this model, what we can do is, for example, this first item is initially when I started doing the budget, I asked the schools and the other people who have budget input to send me their budgets with what it is they felt that they needed and try to keep those within a growth of 2% this year, which is, you know, kind of an inflation factor and it's something that has been consistent for the last couple of years, I think. But because we are experiencing such growth in our other expenses, this week, or last week, I asked folks to scale that back and take that 2% out. So we're going to go flat. And in a couple of cases, based on historical spending patterns, I took it down even to a little bit below where they were in FY '20 based on some of the actual spending. But if we...
So can I just put a fine point on that? So, I asked Mary Almo to go through those areas of the budget where we haven't historically spent as much as is in the budget. For instance, athletic transportation had never been spent at a level more than $10,000 under the budgeted amount. So I think you met with Mike Norman.
Yeah.
And so, that's one of the areas that we're lowering because we haven't really spent that amount. And, you know, if somebody qualifies to go to a national something at the end, we'll find money to do it. But that's an example in different areas where we are, actually, of the four, that's the one that we're recommending first to help get back to it.
Yeah, that's definitely the first thing. So, if we do that, we save some money and it drops the, you know, drops the tax rate by a little bit. And the reason for that is, you know, as you may recall from a few slides before, the program costs are actually a pretty small percentage of the overall budget. So this is not salaries or, you know, benefits or anything. This is purely things like supplies and, you know, books and, you know, all sorts of, you know, things that are needed in the classroom. Let's just get rid of this. Can't see.
So when she gets done, you could say, "Well, what if we do one and not the other? What will the impact be?"
Sorry. Just having trouble seeing where that key is. There we go. So, one of the other things is that we have an awful lot of paraeducators. And we added probably about a dozen paraeducators to the budget this year primarily for special ed. And those were all predicated and needed based on the IEPs that we anticipate coming in in FY '21. However, there are paraeducators throughout the school system. And if we needed to take one or two of them out, the effect would be, it's about $45,000 a year all in for, on average. So if we took out, say, two paraeducators, again, it drops the tax rate by, you know, by a couple of percentage, a couple of basis points, sorry. Third one is, we've got probably, you know, eight or nine folks who have already indicated to us that they absolutely will be or are seriously contemplating retiring at the end of this year. They don't need to notify us until the middle of January. But based on those numbers, we can probably do some reallocation of, you know, some of those positions and not have to rehire to replace all of those positions. And in addition, most of those teachers have been here for quite a long time, are very experienced, and for the most part are probably at the higher end of the pay scale. And if we replace them, we'll probably be able to, you know, find the replacements at a little bit lower cost. So between those two things, we think we can actually save some money without, you know, impacting, you know, any of the active employees. And the effect of that is pretty large. It goes down to actually under 5% if we take those steps.
Let me jump in here and say that we should do this. It would be strategic. And we would look at class size, K through 6, and 7 through 12. And we would look at the people who are departing, reallocate resources, and do so in a way that no one loses their job and that we have reasonable class sizes. And with some of the alternative programs that we're going to be talking about at the next meeting, I think it gives us some flexibility on this.
And just to be clear, we are not anticipating in any of these sort of budget adjustments, we're not anticipating any reductions, of course, in the active...
So that, you didn't say, but that's $250,000 in reallocation.
Yeah.
So I just had a question on, you said there are seven, eight retiring positions. Is this reallocating all of those positions?
No, it's actually probably not replacing two of them. And, you know, then you've got some, you know, reductions, anticipated reductions in salaries. And it could be a combination of, you know, a number of things. But we don't know, you know, we don't know yet specifically which positions are definitely going to retire. And we don't know, you know, until we do some analysis of, you know, how best to, you know, fill the positions that may come open.
And a position in longfall that will not be refunded.
And finally, a couple of meetings back, Mike presented the, basically, a lot of the deferred maintenance projects. And if we scale back on some of the larger but lower priority projects, that also gives us a pretty big lift in terms of reducing that tax rate. So as you can see, any one of these will have an impact. And we can sort of play mix and match. So, for example, if we...
How about if you let the school board do it, rather than you do it?
What if you did, what if you did all four of them? I'd like to see what...
I knew somebody was going to do it.
We were all going to do it. You want to do it all at once?
Yep.
Yeah, I want to see.
All in.
All in.
Or all out, I guess.
Well, how...
All in or all out, yeah.
How many paraeducators can we go down?
Two, that's one. Well, how many new ones are in the budget?
There are like 12.
You just used two before.
We just hired a whole bunch last year, though, at the end of the year.
We did, but they...
Initially asked for 23, I think.
Initially asked for twenty-three, I think.
They, they come with students who have IEPs, so if we know about students who are coming in with IEPs, we have to plan for that. But this is actually hiring fewer new ones, right?
You used two. Two is good.
So, try leaving twelve.
Okay.
Yep.
Put you down to three point what?
Three point eight.
Three point eight percent.
And the, the state's estimate is, estimated is six percent.
That would keep us under the state and frankly, under our neighbors from what I gather from the meeting I had yesterday. But I'm not suggesting to do all of them.
I'm, I'm over here, but...
Can I ask?
Well, I guess that doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, so sorry.
That, that fits me really well. That's okay, we can...
Uh, Dina?
Well, me? Okay. The flat school programs, does that mean we're not expending anything or are we keeping everything as is or are we cutting stuff?
For the most part, it's just taking the fiscal twenty budgets and keeping them flat for fiscal twenty-one. It's a little bit different at the high school because the high school had some one-time costs this year that they won't have next year, so you know, but they have some other one-time, they have some other costs that have gone up for fiscal twenty-one that weren't for fiscal twenty. For example, the rent at this place is a little bit higher than it was at Owl Street, so, or House Center.
So, I think I know what you're getting at. In this budget, even with flattening it out and keeping it at level funding on non-salary costs, there'll be no reduction in programs, no reduction in activities, no reduction in the arts, sports, basically level funds from this year to next.
And no reduction in the personnel type of, as we were, you know, we've been kinda talking about how people are the programs essentially, so...
Right.
In terms of how we...
No program elimination, but just...
Or reduction in staffing to those programs in terms of...
The only reductions would be perhaps a reallocation from the retire, the retired teachers.
Right.
For example, I...
Cause they kinda, some of this kinda...
Yeah, there, there are some of the retired teachers and I don't wanna go into specifics at this point, it's probably not appropriate, but there are some of them that do something very specific...
Right.
That absolutely have to be replaced, we understand that. But there are a couple of three who have similar job responsibilities that, you know, instead of hiring back three, maybe we hire back two.
And if you did this, you would be directing me to do the reallocation based upon the recommendations of the principals.
So, I mean, you know, again, we could, you know, we could play with these numbers and maybe, you know, sort of take four here and, you know...
I'd like to see the first two and not the bottom two.
Joanne?
I just have a question about food service.
If, what are the number of, of students that are, are they decreasing?
And if so, why are our food service costs increasing? Is it the salary and benefits of the employees there or...
The, I, I, I think it has to do with just, you know, the cost of food is, you know, goes up.
This is the contract?
Yeah.
I think that's a revenue neutral, if I'm not mistaken, with the national school lunch program.
It's not entirely revenue neutral because not all of our students...
Well, that's true, or get the free, yeah.
Are, are qualified for the free and reduced.
Yeah.
However, we have a hi, high enough percentage of free and reduced that we do get a significant, you know, influx from, from feds, yeah.
So, we have universal breakfast and lunch, K eight, high school, students who are eligible in a private confidential way have free and reduced lunch and the others do not. Charlene?
Thank you.
Joelle?
Uh, no.
Okay. Anne?
Could you explain the hiring fewer new paras again? If you're anticipating more IEP kids coming who need paras, but, so I wasn't sure what you meant about...
Not, not all the paraeducators are dedicated to special education students. And it's the special education students that, you know, absolutely need specific paraeducator support. And so, the idea is that not, the paraeducators are hired and some of them do both general ed and special ed. And there are a lot that just do general ed. So, the idea is that, you know, we could probably, you know, reduce some of the general ed or, you know, spread them a little bit thinner than they are right now.
Do we try and keep a, a para with a student through their, through the, do we try to keep a para with their student through the grades?
Uh, that's not a question I can answer. Pam, do you wanna...
Does that matter on the...
Kind of a twofold answer. One is that the paraeducators that Mary Alma is talking about are not connected to special education or IEPs. They're paraeducators like our planning rooms, our libraries. There are a few students that are in general education that receive support in the classroom, but they're not special education paras. So, they're not one-on-one. It really depends on the, the special, the, the student as far as how long a, a paraeducator is assigned.
So, I, I don't want this to go unnoticed.
Actually, Dick, you could probably take your seat again so you could see everybody. You aren't in the line of...
Excuse me, I actually like being on this side of the table.
I just add to that answer. And the answer is that regarding the paraeducators, Mary Alma mentioned it, but I don't want it to go, to get lost. In the budget since the last meeting, I added a paraeducator in kindergarten at northeast and at northwest because I feel strongly that the teachers in kindergarten need the extra help. And a lot of the children who come in kindergarten haven't already been on a plan and might, and do pose significant needs that are not known from teacher to teacher. And the alternative programs that we're contemplating are grades one and up. So, those are the two new ones that are in there, but wouldn't be affected by this.
Erin?
The cost of the facility's deferment, what is, just what does that cost again?
Uh, we've, I'm estimating it as about two hundred thousand.
Okay.
We could, we could do more, we could do less, but you know, for these purposes.
So, based on this, and it doesn't have to be talked about at this point, but just maybe a list of what would be deferred? So, we have...
Well, I can tell you right, right now of the projects that you saw at the, at the last presentation, the paving at the northeast school.
Okay.
It's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then there are two projects at the intermediate school, uh, as a lib, library and some bathroom renovations.
So, specifically those projects?
Those, those are three. But, you know, we can, we can do more.
I just wanted to know what that piece of the puzzle...
We can do less too. I mean, you know, it's just a, it's just a, you know, just a, a sampling for purposes of, of demonstrating the effect.
Yeah, good effect.
Allison? Oh, okay.
Aww.
Joanne?
I, we had, we hired some consultants that told us that we made too much use of paraeducators. Rob? Or it's somebody who's been around.
That was a long time ago, though.
It wasn't a long time ago, it was very, very recently. It was in the last two years where we got this. And I'm wondering, you know, sometimes you get these reports from people and you kinda implement them in the first year and then you go, "Oh, that didn't work" cause you don't tweak it. So, I'm just wondering about that. Are we still following and...
I'd be glad to respond to that and ask Pam to jump in as well because she knows a lot more than I do. But I'm, I've made the point at the last few meetings that the needs are very significant. And we are seeing more and more emotionally, behaviorally challenged students now than ever before. And this is not without a lot of thought and planning to recommend that these kids get the attention that, that they need. And Pam can give you the numbers, Joanne.
I'm not suggesting that, that, but I'm wondering if we're reverting back to the, our old way of doing things, which is hiring more special edu, where maybe we actually need more special educators, which might be more expensive, but it might be what we need. And I'm just inquiring about that.
Allison?
I think I know what you're talking about. It was, that was more when they were co-teaching and the classrooms had a para and a teacher.
I was new on the board then.
So, some of those paras were providing general instruction and I believe that...
We, we're not doing that anymore, correct?
Right, right. So, that's a different use of paras now than then.
Okay, thank you.
It was also a long time ago.
That was, I was gonna say, I recall that report was about instruction being provided, not, this seems to be about behavior supports is what the need for these paras is.
And, and that's true.
Different than the report.
That's what you're both saying.
Yeah. It's all about that, Hurley.
Uh, question, you were talking about the reallocation of two. And I know we watch our class size averages well at the intermediate and the elementary school. But have we checked our class size averages both at the middle school and the high school? Is that where we would see that indication or we don't know yet?
I would ask the principals at all the schools...
Okay.
To make recommendations and it may affect or may not affect class size depending upon how we reconfigure things.
But no programs would be cut if we did not rehire two.
Keep in mind that with some alternative programs, increased alternative programs, that would, that would help compensate for any changes. In other words, if there are some students exhibiting some significant behavioral issues who are no longer in a regular classroom but being served elsewhere, that eases the class size burden a bit.
Uh, my concern is, is that because of the way the state requires us to word the ballot item, and I'm looking at the increase in special education cost, and again, nineteen percent, but we know that it's reimbursement and basically we would have to, which we wouldn't, but we would have to eliminate two salaries for every one in general education, that the taxpayers unfortunately are only gonna look at the percentage that's in that item.
I, I don't think any of the retirees on the current list are special educators.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is I think we need, we have to be very prudent and I understand that the increase is gonna be statewide, I know that, and all the districts are facing the same. But I think I would kind of like to know what that would affect. We, I guess what I'm looking for, Mariama, is how would the five percent, five point two percent that's there now versus the four point whatever, how that would affect a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house in the city of Rutland, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house in the city of Rutland and what their tax bill, the difference in their tax bills would be? Because I think we've always looked at it that way. So, that way we can see and show the taxpayers with the pre-bate program what the effect's gonna be. And I think we're really gonna need to really look at that this year. So, that way, if we're gonna look at a five percent increase, we really have to justify it and show the application to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house with, I can't remember what we used to see.
How many cents it is.
You know what I'm saying? I think it was like what, fifty thousand and then we also looked at someone who was making a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever. But I think we really need to see that so we can show that effect to the taxpayers because...
In our brochures.
We need to really focus on what that's gonna do to them.
Can I just respond to that, Hurley? We have looked at the brochures that you've put out the last couple of years and I think we need to expand upon that and put a finer point on it, that's one of them. So, I shared that with the administrators, the leadership cabinet last Thursday. So, we're gonna work on coming back to you with a different way of conveying that in our, our mailing to the taxpayers. And that's exactly the kind of idea that we'll be looking for.
Yeah, we used to see that in our budget deliberations, what the effect is on an average house, you know, with an average income. And I can't, I will look through my old budget books.
We'll, we'll do it for you in January.
Yeah, I think that traditionally does come by the first, the meeting in January, which to tee this, tee this up, I would, the, the language, the ballot language, I'm, I'm trying to recall the state mandate in terms of, of the prescribed language in the ballot has...
Increase in spending.
Increase in, okay, so what is that, just from last year, what was it?
Again, so, so I can see this. Shall the voters of Rutland City School District approve the school board to expend fifty-four thousand, uh, fifty-four million, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars, which is the amount the school board determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, two hundred forty dollars per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is three point five percent higher than spending for the current year.
That's that percentage that I'm talking about?
So, that three point eight percent we're looking at here, is that the, the increase in the equalized per pupil?
No, this, uh...
Cause that's what's gonna be on the ballot.
The equalized per pupil, little magic.
If you took that, that three point eight percent or what that dollar value of that is, what does that...
Five point six four percent.
So, that's what's gonna be...
That's what, no cuts.
No, no, that's, that's, that's with, that's with all the cuts that you see up above.
See, that's what, that's what's making me nervous.
Oh, yeah.
Without the cuts, Mariama?
Without the cuts, it's seven and a half.
Yeah, wow.
So, for instance, a Stafford budget, which is in here, that went up seven and a half percent.
The tuition went up.
The tuition went up, so that's the effect on our budget.
Right.
So, that's another driver.
So, that's funky too, cause the tuition's, it's not really what we're paying.
And Mary, can, Mary Alma, can you just go back and hit all four again and show me that number again?
Yep.
Oh, no, that's all four, okay.
That is it.
Thank you.
Seven point five with, 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 with none of them.
You can, you can ask us to come back in January with other ideas too.
Matt? So, the drivers are healthcare increase and increased special education costs. And is there any indicator that those things are peaking this year?
The only, the only indication that we have on the healthcare costs is that they're probably going up.
I'm thinking ahead though, like, are they, is there any indication that those things are like peaking now? And, and right? I mean, that's, when you're making this decision, I don't have a good feeling about next year.
The thing is that you have to realize is, is that in arbitration, the letter that came out today, they went with the employees' last best offer, not the employers'. So, we're not even looking at increasing the twenty percent contribution until twenty-two. And so, costs are still gonna go up with, with a potential of a two percent increase in the employer, employee contribution in twenty-two. That was done by the arbitrator.
This is the consolidated thing?
Yes.
W, the rest of it.
That's gonna have an effect statewide on everyone.
Yeah.
So, what the heck's the point? So, I would be comfortable, I'm just gonna put this out there, looking at the equalized cost per pupil of whatever it is and giving a, a, a ceiling on that and saying, "Come back with a budget that's within, that's less than five percent or seven percent or six percent or a number." That's what I would feel comfortable. That's just an idea. Come back next time with that. Is that's...
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Do we know what the city's doing, by the way?
Uh, one point nine, is it?
Two point nine.
Two point nine.
Plus paving, uh...
Two point nine bonding.
Five million dollar bond.
Yeah. Yeah. Dina?
Can we go back to the fancy changes?
Of course.
Can you take out the two paraeducator, just leave the three and see if the... And then go back to the equalized per pupil thing that actually shows us the...
Five point nine two.
What was the difference with, with or without?
Five point six or something.
Yeah, it was, it was, it's about thirty basis points. Three tenth of a...
Basis points.
So, the two, the two paraeducator give us, if we just eliminate, if we keep those in the budget with what, the variables that we have right now, it gives us, I'm kinda like looking at...
It was five point nine two, five point six four. So, it's about thirty basis points.
And, but there's still a lot of, it seems right now that there's still a lot of unknowns in the healthcare and...
Not really.
No.
No.
The, the hea, the healthcare number is fixed at this point for this fiscal year. We, we know what that number is. The unknown for healthcare is, as Hurley said, about six months past the fiscal twenty-one year end.
This is an interesting thing though, because our tax rate is gonna increase three point eight percent and what is our spending per pupil gonna increase?
Five point six.
Yeah.
And the, well, the reason for that is, is this number here.
We are subsidized.
Okay? And this number, this twenty seventy-four, I wanna, you know, say again, that's an estimate that I came up with for, based on the average reduction of enrollments over the state. We could have more, we could have less. I don't know what that number is yet.
But we know in January.
We should, we should know. But, you know, if, if that number drops to say, you know, two thousand and fifty, you know, that's, you know, that's gonna... But, um, you know, if, if that number drops to say, you know, two thousand and fifty, you know, that's, you know, that's going to pop that, um, dollar per pupil up but it has nothing to do with, uh, the, you know, the controlling of the expenses.
So we did this so that you might give us some guidance when we come back in January.
Well, then maybe this is more controllable right here. We also wanted to keep the spending per pupil where we don't get penalized, right?
Right, well, we are, we're nowhere near getting penalized.
We're so far below.
The, the, the penalty, the penalty point is well over eighteen thousand dollars and we're at sixteen, sixteen-three at this point.
See, we, right, it is true, right now, we don't know what the impact is going to be. At the end of the day, voters are going to be looking at the ballot item, they're going to look at the total dollars, they're going to look at the percent increase in per pupil spending and then they're going to look at those that are informed and inclined to do so. We're going to take a look at how much extra this is going to cost and the last couple of years, we've been fortunate that, uh, there haven't been cost increases. But the city is, we know that the city is going to be increasing, statewide is going to be increasing, so we don't know what that impact is. And at the end of the day, the voters are going to be deciding in March, um, and, and we have to come up with something by the next meeting, January fourteenth, I believe that's when the next meeting is, to be able to, uh, give to the city clerk to put on the ballot. Aaron?
So, I'm not sure if this is a thing, but can you calculate what the percentage, the increase is just from healthcare? Taking out all of our other ancillary stuff, what healthcare is going to do to those numbers alone?
That's it right there.
So, but that, yeah, but like I want to see what it would do to our,
What do you mean what it would do?
The percentages we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what is, how does that actually, what is the percentage of here?
Right, yeah, healthcare.
Okay.
If you take that six, it's about ten percent of the budget.
Hmm, that's not what I'm.
No.
Do you want to sit around, try to say?
No.
Yeah, I think, I think what Erin's looking for is, is if we can explain how that, go back to that.
How the healthcare affects the increase.
Right, how that seven hundred and forty-one thousand, nine sixty affects the percentage of increase in taxes.
Oh.
Yeah, extract that, so, because that's out of our hands. Okay, well.
About one and a half percent of the increase maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but again, if we're looking at keeping our increase
Two percent?
Citywide, we can extract that one and a half percent and say we're only raising it four percent based on uncontrollable costs.
Do we have any guidance to give the administration? Cause we could, Joanne?
The state's saying six percent, come in at five percent or less.
Uh, the total budget.
Or like you were talking before of the, uh,
Per pupil spending.
Well, the per pupil spending, the thing is, one percentage point of savings and increase in the budget does very little to the per pupil because we're subsidized, right?
So we would do that. If you said, not on the tax rate, but on the per pupil cost, minute, five percent or less, we'll come back and show you what impact that has. And then you can decide.
Will we know more figures firm, Mary? I'm sorry, Dick, you didn't call me.
No, it's fine.
Uh, Mariama, do we, will we know by mid-January what our firm, uh, student count would be that we're going to be able to use equalized?
I don't know for sure. I, I, I can't answer that question. I just, I just don't know the, the calendar well enough. And based on the meetings that I've had with VASBO over the last couple of months, um, those numbers, it sounds like they bounce around all spring. So, you know, the, the final numbers are, I don't think are, are published until like literally May.
Right.
Well after the vo- the vote takes place. So I, I'm not sure how often they get changed between now and, and then.
Joanne?
One of the things I'd like to do is bring in the state, they come around and do a dog and pony show about how complicated all of this stuff is. Before the budget, just because, so people
For the public.
For the public, have them come and do something for the public, might be, or maybe it'll be too confusing.
I think Mariama did a good job.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to add anything more than what has already been covered.
No, well, Mary, she, Mariama did do a good job, but, you know, how come our budget can go up six percent and our per pupil can be up eight percent? That's, or ten percent, I mean, that's a
Charlene?
Well, and really it's about the tax rate, Joanne, because that's what taxpayers will see. So at five point six on per pupil, the tax rate goes up three point seven.
So they get a benefit.
Yes.
Which the, one might think about when one is
One might.
A bigger bang for their buck.
Right. Charlene?
Going back to the conversation that we just had about the five percent that you were talking about, that was on the per pupil cost?
That's what Joanne said.
Were you saying that, because we've got them all checked off and we're not there yet, so are you saying you're going to go back between now and January and kind of figure out, do some more massaging to try, see if we can get that down five percent? Is that what we're saying?
We can, we can try that, yeah.
No, we, we will do it, if that's what you direct us to do.
So basically, it's going to be this, plus you're going to find some other things that we can squeeze in there, if that's what we want.
If that's what we want. But I think Joanne said no, she means this one, not the per pupil, because that's too hard target.
You know, I don't know what I'd mean. I'm saying to do it alone.
I would say like four and a half percent. I feel like if we can have that as a target
Okay, there you go.
And we can balance it out.
Take, take out six paraeducators and we're at five percent down here.
Yeah, I don't want to say we're going to do that now.
I don't think that's what we're going to do, but that's, that's the order of magnitude you're talking about.
I like this setup, so if you could come back in January with this setup, that would be awesome.
Maybe we'll find something else to add to it as well.
Yeah, if you can add to the list.
I'm going to, my first thought is that the school board salaries will be the next expense reduction up there, okay.
So we have to start writing checks to show that we pay you.
One, one thing that might be easier and, you know, Michael may not, you know, like to hear me say this, but I mean, we've taken out three specific projects here. There may be some more deferred maintenance that we can defer.
I think you just walked out.
I think you need, I, I, Cam and then I'll finish it up and kind of wrap up this part for this evening.
Yeah, but we're getting awfully close to sixty million, which I think is sort of psychologically a problem. The other difficulty I have is that, how many retirees did we take out of the budget last year? Cause this is sort of the same, um, go-to maneuver that we've used last time and sometimes we end up with a surplus going back to the state so that we're actually cutting. When we cut expenses, sometimes of non-expended money, that would have been refunded anyway, so it's not really a cut. It shows up on the front end as a cut, but doesn't show up on the tax rate the following year, the way the surplus had worked. So I was just curious if I could get the number of, how many retirees that we reallocated last year? Because that's going to be a bigger number than paraeducators.
Than paraeducators.
And if indeed, we can manage it through just retirements, I think everybody would be happier saying we're going to share some of this by reallocating rather than just randomly getting rid of paraeducators. When we've been saying the middle school is getting better, when we were saying that there's support that needs to be provided. So I'm, I'm usually the one that, and I've been very quiet this year, because I was predicting that this, we've been very good for the previous two years. Every year I was always saying the sky is falling and then we came down with a two percent increase or whatever. So I knew we were going to get to the point where, and I think some of like with the food budget, is that we have been, um, you know, when the contracts keep coming up, those are sort of controls that we don't always have and that was costing us more because we'd had some savings in previous years based upon good contract negotiations. So it is that, you know, like, I got in trouble last time by suggesting getting rid of a bus, but that's at least something that's two hundred thousand bucks or ninety thousand or something that is concrete that we could then potentially replace. So I don't have the answers, but I do have concerns. I'm always the Chicken Little saying the sky's falling.
I want to make sure that we do not harm in any way the quality of education we're providing and I know you believe that too.
No, absolutely. And so that's one of the reasons that I'm not saying two percent or nothing. Because I truly do think it is a community-wide discussion and I do have concerns about the five million. You know, the, the five million dollar bond is going to raise three cents on the tax rate, which to the normal person thinks three cents isn't much, but when you are having trouble paying your taxes to start with, three percent here and, you know, five percent there, it really does add up, so.
Yeah, Allison?
I don't think any of us have, um, are suggesting that we, you know, just randomly, um, you know, eliminate any positions with the paraeducators or retirees or anything, you know.
Oh, I apologize if that's the suggestion that I made. No, I was just saying the dollar value of a full-time teacher is more than a paraeducator, so.
And Mike.
Mike.
And Mike.
I'm sorry, Allison and then Mike.
I'm normally sitting there.
So I guess, I, I would like to see, I think it's important too, to know, you know, as Erin had asked, the deferred facilities projects because I think it's important that we know what isn't going to be done for it, especially since we had to go to the voters before a big bond to catch up on deferred maintenance. So I guess it's kind of the wording of that or what we're truly deferring that I think is going to be very important. And I still
We'll give you a list.
I, I still, I personally have some concerns of flat school programs, activities, costs. I mean, obviously if you feel comfortable that nothing's going to be lost, but I mean, we're looking at that affects more students and education than anything else we're talking about.
Actually, could we ask, interrupt, could we take that out right now and see what the impact is?
It's got a relatively small impact, actually.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, so.
But the, one thing I can tell you is having gone, you know, one of the things about being new is you look at things with some fresh eyes. And one of the things that I did was, um, I looked back over the last couple of years and virtually all of these programs have underspent their budgets for the last few years. So, um, the FY nineteen budgets were underspent in total. I mean, there's some areas, you know, you know, there's, there's a little give and take. And then the FY nineteen budgets were increased by the two percent. And so we're basically saying we're going to, you know, flatten it out at that level and, um, we shouldn't, we should still be able to do everything that people have been doing and just not have, uh, as much cushion in the budget, let's put it that way.
I mean, I think my concern too is, is that, you know, we need to be innovative and we need to be pushing, you know, programming limits and I wouldn't want to have a point two percent decrease to the budget affect that.
Yeah, one of, one of the reasons that that, that was suggested was
Mike and then
Matt.
Mike then Matt.
Okay, you, on the medical, the healthcare costs,
Yeah.
do we know what the drivers are in that? I mean, does the state explain, is it new pe- people added to the system? Is it overuse of the system or?
It's, it's, it's basically, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield saying these are our increases. The same way if, if you go to Vermont Health Connect, they've got very similar increases to their, to their premiums.
Matt?
Thank you.
I, I get concerned about playing around with, well, if, if we don't, if we leave that in, it's only this amount, it's only this, and it's such a tiny little amount. And the reason is because you, I think we've just agreed, or most people, people seem to indicate they feel that way, that these cost increases aren't peaking. So we're not seeing the peak of more demand for special education services. I certainly don't think anybody's feeling that health insurance increases are peaking. And so if you start saying, well, but we don't want to cut that little bit, but then next year it goes up again a little bit, I, I think it's, it's a snowball effect, we're not, it's going to keep building year after year. And I feel like it's responsible to set like a target percentage number for whatever, like
And there's a lot of psychology.
Hey, we're going for this number.
Yeah, a lot of psychology in this, the budgeting as well, because we have to have a budget that is, is obviously not going, as Cam had said, and, and I think we do recognize, we are in a community where a lot of people, uh, you know, that, it is a community where very sensitive to the income piece. We also have to consider the, uh, you know, the likely, well, what we might predict the response of the voters is going to be because you know if a budget goes down, your cuts are going to be pretty deep next round. So, you know, it, it's, we're really going to have to be careful about how we approach this and then when we finally make a decision, how we promote it. So, do we have a sense of what we want the administration to come back with on January fourteenth and some other options that we might consider to get that rate to the five or lower?
Is that what you'd like, the five or lower?
Yes.
Is that what people want to see?
I would like to see.
And then, I mean, I, I would just take a hard look at whatever you possibly can, uh, and if, you know, things over people. I mean, that, that's, I mean, I have to in my organization when it comes to, you just have to do those things. And, you know, Peter Aments two years ago warned us about this, if you remember. He said that we were going to have a couple of soft years and then we were going to get hit. Well, this is, this is it. This is the start of it, so, um, we have to be very cautious.
We'll take that advice. Did you find the process here, interactive process helpful in understanding it and making a decision?
Yes.
When we come back in January, would you like to go through the same process?
Yeah. Yeah, I do like that, but I'll have to say, I, I'm not comfortable with a board making recommendation, a board imposing anything but particular limits or percentage. I, how the business is run is the job of the professionals, the administration. I know that's the way it works. With my organization, a board will set a budget, I have to manage that, manage within that budget. I don't know whether or not two paraeducators or ten paraeducators or, or no paraeducators. That's really up to, uh, you folks to make those determinations. I think this is very helpful to see what impacts are. But I think at the end of the day, you're in a best, you're in the only position to really make those types of decisions.
I appreciate that.
So, and can we, I want to, just want to wrap this, I know, um, Joanne, Cam and Erin, and then we're going to move on.
So I agree with you. I, I, I'm uncomfortable particularly with the paraeducators. However, the, the directive to maybe reallocate retiree positions, because there has been a lot of changes in the way that we do things and with technology. And so when people retire, it provides opportunity not unlike in the eighties, in the nineties, remember? You remember, I remember, you remember, not everyone does, but, you know, we could do more things with fewer people because, you know, we were connected. And also the facilities projects are also, I think, not the specific ones, but to, to have you go back and, and say, okay, I think we can get away with this, this and this. But I also am concerned about the, um, the funds that we keep dipping into, I'm losing my words.
Contingency.
Contingency funds, thank you. Uh, we dipped into them a little bit this year and I'm not sure about what, if there is any allocation in the budget to put into the contingency fund.
Yes, so
Yes, the, the contingency for both FY twenty and FY twenty-one is the same, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Also, um, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, uh, there will, there is enough money, uh, to, so that we won't have to borrow. Not our great school district can do that. So, uh, Peter Aments was very good about that and we're continuing that, that there will be enough money in reserve so that before our first, uh, uh, payments, before our first revenue comes in, that we'll have enough to, to make our, our payments.
Did we have a couple of other, quickly, Aaron?
We were noticing utilities is going down, we were excited. But my point was, when you come back in January, you know, obviously use your best judgment, but be, maybe more detailed in what you have chosen in each of the items you then present to us. So we have a better idea of, um, dollar allocation and
And we'll, we'll, that meeting will be exclusively for this purpose, exclusively. So if we had any presentations, what's that?
We have to come up with a vote then, right?
Yeah, because it has to go to the
I think your marching orders are to come up with a per pupil cost that's five percent or less.
Yes, that's it, whatever you can, no, I thought it was the per pupil.
We keep going back and forth between tax and the per pupil.
Is tax rate five percent or less?
None of these have had the per pupil below five percent.
Yeah.
So we'd be telling them to cut that and
That one, yeah.
No.
The per pupil one? That's the one on the ballot.
I'd like the per pupil to be five percent or less.
This is, this is Then we're telling them to cut even more than we can sell.
I think the per pupil has to be five percent or less for it, that's what's on the ballot.
And, and that percentage, just to be clear.
Thanks for clarifying that though, because that's
Just to be clear, that five percent represents the growth of per pupil spending from fiscal twenty to fiscal twenty-one. And number one, um, we can do that with the things that we control, um, but we still, you know, there's some uncertainty in terms of the equalized pupil number itself.
Good point.
All right.
So just a quick comment on this, as a board member
Oh, I'm sorry, Cam, and then Charlene.
Yeah, Charlene, but I'll go after her, yeah.
So, just as a board member, I feel like this format has helped me to kind of get an insight on what is, what you're thinking about and what, what kind of lanes you're going down. So I, I appreciate the presentation and then we can talk about it again in Jan- but it, it's helpful and like Dick said, you guys are in the best seat to know what's going to, you know, what's going to fly and keep the program at top notch, so
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation.
Cam, can we wrap up?
Yeah, and of course, I'm a little different philosophy and I didn't go there, but it's like the one point or the one point two or whatever, the hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Northeast parking lot. It would be really helpful is if somebody said, no, we have so many potholes now that people refuse to park there. I was going to go look personally to see how bad I thought it looked, but that would be helpful to know if the people at Northeast are clamoring for it or if it has just been on the list for a very long time, so it made the top of the list just because it's a big ticket item and it kept getting pushed off.
We'll prioritize it.
Okay. All right, so I think we have our, um, I appreciate this, uh, in the discussion and we will have a, the next meeting will be and we will have a, the next meeting will be exclusively on the budget. So Mariama, thank you, this is your first round through this, you did very well. I love how you presented that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, somebody have a flashlight? I think we're, all right, do we have any old business to come before?
Whoa!
I've seen the light.
Hannah, is that you? All right, uh, do we have any old business to come before the board? Is there any new business? All right.
I'd like to make a motion, go into executive session, the superintendent box, to discuss personnel contractual matters that premature release will put the board at a substantial disadvantage.
Okay, an opinion as the chair, do we have that motion? The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?